So with that, we will move to this special meeting about climate, the Regional Climate Action Plan with Development Services Director Kenyon.
Thank you.
Yay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna pull up a presentation. Alright, um, so as you all know by now, uh, the, we're working on a plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions countywide with the goal of getting to forty percent below nineteen ninety emissions levels by twenty thirty and carbon neutrality by twenty forty-five, which are the state's goals as well. Uh, this effort is being led by County Planning and Building Department, uh, but, uh, and the Board of Supervisors, but everybody's participating, all seven Humboldt cities, um, in addition to the county. The county just released a new draft of the Climate Action Plan, sorry, uh, on August fourteenth, and that's why we're here tonight to, uh, look at the content of that new draft, uh, talk about plans for implementation, once it gets adopted, and talk about the current timeline for adoption. So how did we get here? You, originally, when we were working on our general plan update, we were thinking we were gonna have a Eureka specific Climate Action Plan, but then around twenty eighteen, the different jurisdictions started to talk and, um, in twenty nineteen, signed an MOU, uh, to work together on a regional plan. In twenty twenty-two, the county released a first public review draft, which we call the twenty twenty-two draft cap in the agenda summary, um, and then the county secured a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding from Humboldt County Association of Governments, HCOG, for the California Environmental Quality Act Environmental Impact Report. Uh, it's, um, like any discretionary action by a government, we have to go through CEQA and environmental review for the Climate Action Plan itself for its adoption, it's a necessary step. Um, the county released a request for proposals and selected a consultant, um, called Rincon to prepare the EIR. Um, and as Rincon was reviewing the document, they identified concerns with our twenty twenty-two draft and that it wouldn't earn a qualified status with the state of California because it lacked, um, substantial evidence for some of the measures. Um, for instance, it was very ambitious, um, about things like, uh, individuals buying so many electric vehicles by twenty thirty, uh, that just, uh, they didn't have, it didn't have substantial evidence that that was achievable. Um, so the county Board of Supervisors authorized the reallocation of that REAP grant funds to pay Rincon to redraft the Climate Action Plan. So this new twenty twenty-four draft cap is a completely new document. Um, and some of the big differences with this new draft, uh, is that it's replacing, the old draft had a, um, greenhouse gas emissions inventory from twenty fifteen. There's an updated one in this one for the year twenty twenty-two. It includes some different, uh, emission sources. Uh, it didn't include in the inventory emission sources that don't have corresponding reduction measures. So, um, the previous cap included, for instance, livestock emissions, this new draft, um, cap doesn't look at that. Uh, it also used this new twenty twenty-two inventory to backcast nineteen ninety levels and forecast twenty thirty levels to figure out how much we needed to reduce to meet our goal of forty percent below nineteen ninety levels by twenty thirty. Uh, and then it revised, has a revised list of, of reduction measures, our strategies, uh, for meeting these goals and their quantifications. One, uh, thing that it does is it adds some distinctions between urban and rural measures. For instance, there's a different measure for, uh, households that have access to electricity and natural gas to go all-electric, while there's another measure for people that live further away and don't have access to those things to go from, you know, wood and propane to something, um, thinking about microgrids and solar and things like that. Um, also, there's lower, uh, targets for mode shift in rural areas from single occupancy vehicles to transit and bikes and, um, walking. But interestingly, if you look at the reduction amounts that we get from those different goals, it's actually pretty comparable because one, uh, person taking transit who lives in a rural area, they actually contribute, you know, that's a bigger reduction in vehicle miles traveled than one person who takes shorter trips in an urban area. Um, I don't think I explained that well. Anyway, uh, it also has this whole appendices, um, appendix that provides a lot of evidence demonstrating how these measures and goals are achievable. Uh, one thing that's different about it that, uh, I think some of us didn't realize was gonna be different about it, uh, going into it is that it no longer tracks individual jurisdictions, it just focuses on countywide. So the previous cap, it broke the emissions inventory down by jurisdiction, and then it also broke the targets down. So we had an overall countywide target, uh, for mode shift, but then it would, it had individual, uh, accounting for each jurisdiction. And this new plan just has overall numbers, and we can talk more about what that means. Um, and so, looking at the new twenty twenty-two greenhouse gas inventory, uh, it shows that the majority of our emissions are from fossil fuel burning vehicles, um, out of the things that were looked at. And this is showing the backcast nineteen ninety emission levels at the top, and then they looked at what we're at now in twenty twenty-two, and then they have an adjusted forecast based on just, uh, looking at continuing how we are doing, but also looking at things that we know are happening at the state level, like requirements to decarbonize electricity. Um, and so, whereas the grayish purple line is what our target is, so the area in between the blue and gray line, that's how much we need to reduce locally, um, in addition to these state measures to meet our targets, which for twenty thirty means reducing greenhouse gas emissions by two hundred and eighteen thousand and eighty-eight metric tons of CO2 equivalent. So, uh, then, you know, after setting the target and thinking about how much we need to reduce, the plan goes into how we're gonna meet those reductions, and it starts with these eleven overall strategies, and then it has twenty-six objective goals, which they call measures, um, and fourteen of them are quantified and twelve are supporting. And then, under each measure, there's a bunch of implementing actions, um, for how we're gonna achieve our goal. So just looking at the quantified measures and how much they are planning on reduce, us reducing greenhouse gas emissions with each, um, it's looking at, um, I think the most emissions reduction coming from, again, going to, um, zero emission vehicle adoption, um, and then electrification of off-road equipment, uh, is the second biggest reduction, mode shift, third, and then diversion of organic waste from landfills. Uh, organic waste, the trucking of it to landfills, it creates emissions, and then also it breaks down anaerobically in landfills, which generates methane, which is a really potent greenhouse gas, which you can avoid by composting. Um, I hope I explained that correctly. So what is the city's role in all of this? Um, there's measures in here that, that call for us to lead by example. We have direct control over our municipal fleet, over our facilities, um, we can influence how our employees commute to work. Um, we can also support other agencies that are already doing a lot in these areas. Uh, for instance, supporting Humboldt Transit Authority in building up the transit network, um, and supporting HWMA and trying to figure out how to get a local organics processing facility. Um, and then, most of it is relying on individual community members to make their own investments and behavioral changes. So it's what carrots and sticks, uh, we can use to incentivize or require behavioral change. Uh, and so, there's, uh, some of the actions, I kind of, I read through all the actions, and most of them can be summarized under these types of things. Um, removing or reducing regulatory barriers, so like permit streamlining for, uh, microgrids, uh, adding regulations or fees. Uh, one of the measures is to go all-electric with new construction, uh, which will require some sort of regulation to prevent people from hooking up to natural gas. Um, there's, uh, a lot of helping people connect with existing funding sources or pursuing new funding for grants, rebates, loans, tax credits. Um, building supportive infrastructure and programs and services to encourage behavioral change. So for instance, to get more people biking, uh, we have our bike plan on to build more bike paths, um, maybe do bike share programs or car share or shuttles, um, conducting education outreach training. And then there's a lot of, some of these measures, we already, uh, conducted the feasibility studies, or, you know, regional agencies up here have, and they're already working on them, and then ones that are new measures, they, um, start with thinking about feasibility and planning for them. Um, so there's a lot of calls for feasibility studies in, in this Climate Action Plan. Alright, moving on timeline. So, the first step of the CEQA Environmental Impact Report process is this notice of preparation, uh, which the county released on August thirtieth. Uh, there's a thirty-day public comment period that ends on September thirtieth. And then, uh, they will begin to draft the environmental document, and their hope is to have a public review draft published by spring of twenty twenty-five. Then there'll be a thirty-day public comment period, and then they'll incorporate or address comments and, uh, go to the Board of Supervisors for the adoption of the final EIR and Climate Action Plan in the summer of twenty twenty-five. And then we would act to consider adoption after the Council, uh, Board of Supervisors does, since they're the lead agency and they'll be adopting the Environmental Impact Report. Um, so implementation, the plan talks about, uh, it calls it, oh, I'm blanking on the name for it. The, it's maybe the capstone, it's, they talk about it being the most important measure, which is to form a Regional Climate Committee comprised of responsible parties, uh, from the county and the seven cities and from the regional agencies that are involved in this work, um, and potentially others to oversee regional coordination on implementation of the cap. Um, but it doesn't get into exactly who's gonna be on it and how it's gonna be structured and where it's gonna be housed, so that's gonna be the big discussion moving forward. Um, and something that the Board of Supervisors discussed when they talked about this new draft cap at their, um, September tenth, uh, meeting. The plan also calls for a climate program manager to staff the Regional Climate Committee and facilitate their work and coordinate with staff of the participating jurisdictions and produce, um, either annual or biannual progress reports where we, um, they get all the jurisdictions to report, um, to create a progress report on where we are with all the actions, and then also to update the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, uh, to see if our actions are achieving the reductions that we're hoping they will. That's it for the presentation, and, um, I, the, um, Public Works Director Gerbing is here, uh, he oversees a lot of stuff that's in this plan, uh, for the city end. And then I also have the Chief Building Official, Brendan Riley, here, um, if you have questions about electrification. Uh, the goals for electrifying existing buildings are much lower now, and they've understood that, uh, the struggle with that, um, in talking to jurisdictions, uh, especially with older homes in Eureka, it can be, uh, difficult to, and then you also need a trigger for people to come in so that you can then ask them to upgrade existing homes. So it's just not reasonable to expect that a ton of people are gonna hit this trigger and have to upgrade, or we can incent, I mean, maybe if we get a great incentive program, but anyway, that, that goes lower, but it's still pushing for, um, all-electric new construction, so if you have questions about buildings and all-electric buildings, we have Building Official here.
Thank you, and before we get started, I do have a point of order question, um, because it was such a kerfuffle, uh, we did not do public comment in the beginning of the meeting, shall I do that now, or shall I wait till after questions?
You can do it now, since this is a special meeting, we only have comments on this item.
Right.
And so you can do it after, uh, questions, as you would with any, uh, regular item.
After questions, great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, do we have any questions? Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you, Director Kenyon, um, it's a great presentation, and it's a super-dense document, so I hope people have time to digest it and think about it, um, before the EIR is finalized, I mean, that's kind of really where we're, where we're at. I, you know, um, well, I was gonna make a, a comment, a, a comment versus having a question, but my first question is thinking about what's required of us in the plan, um, is there any, and I don't see it necessarily in the document, the grid can't even manage it, you know, what we're trying to achieve. Where does, where does, you know, the, the public utility fit into this? It's the most important piece, I mean, we can't even get Humboldt, um, you know, additional service, so this is a huge lift that has to be done quickly, and I wonder how, how we can fit that into this plan, or how that discussion plays in.
There is a supporting measure about, um, I think it's an individual measure, uh, trying to position us as a rural area that wants to decarbonize, as like a model to, to get help, and then there's also, it tries, it acknowledges this issue uh, that's gonna hold us up on electrification, which is that we don't have that distribution and transmission capacity, uh, up here. And, um, that's one way, it's, you know, one strategy, and then it also talks about trying to work with wind to, and PG&E, to make sure that we benefit locally and are able to use wind energy locally by getting them as part of the Community Benefits Agreement to, uh, to help us build out our grid locally so we can handle electricity, electrification. Uh, but yeah, that is a huge, uh, struggle. There's also a lot of calls for microgrids in the plan, uh, which I think is a way to address it too, um, islanding and, and microgrids.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, that's kind of the bottleneck that a lot of us see, right, is the ability to electrify when we're already kind of tapped out, and, believe me, I'm a hundred percent, hundred percent supportive of this, and this plan, I think, you know, helps us achieve, getting to net zero is a, a huge undertaking, but without the grid support, um, we're in trouble. My, my second question, that, I don't know if we can address it here necessarily, but what we're talking about needing to do is hundreds of millions of dollars, you know, literally, I mean, nine thousand charging, EV charging, uh, points across the county, or some incredibly high number. How does that fit in, right? I mean, we have this plan, and it's like, oh, this is great, here's what we're gonna do, but we need the money, right, and this, and our communities and our cities aren't gonna be able to do this alone. So that, you know, I think this is great, I, I love plant, plans and planning, and we have twenty years to achieve this, which is frankly too long, we really have about five to ten years to completely change what we do, um, as, as a global society. So, you know, lobbying, I think there's a component, lobby offshore win, PG&E, you know, it's all these different things, but I don't know, you know, where does the money part come into this, other than we get the plan developed and hopefully that attracts money?
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
It sets us up to be more, uh, you know, hopefully be more competitive for a lot of different funding sources, especially making it a regional effort grant. Funders really seem to appreciate that. Um, yeah, and it is, it's got these ambitious measures, and there's these implementing actions, but it still gives us discretion in how we get there, so I think as we go, we'll have to think about financial feasibility with, with each particular thing, you know, if we, especially with, if we decide to go the route of the carrot route, where we're imposing new regulations, uh, and requiring things of private citizens and developers, we really will have to consider the economic consequences of that before we make those decisions. Um, and yeah, just hoping that there, the plan does identify a lot of different funding sources for a lot of different things, so I think that's gonna be a huge part of implementation, is trying to go out and get that, get that money for us.
No, definitely, I'll, I'll pass for now, thank you.
Do we have any further questions from Council? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Um, we don't currently have staff designated, um, related to Climate Action Plan. It's, and, I mean, I appreciate that you are presenting it, but, you know, it's not, anyway, we don't have like a Climate Action Plan designated staff member.
That would be me, I attend the meetings, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you for being that, I'm not trying, sorry, maybe that was awkward, um, anyway, great.
But I'm, yeah, we have different departments who do different parts of this.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like Community Services has facilities, they deal with solid waste and organics, and then Public Works has, uh, dealing with mode shift and that sort of thing, and our wastewater and water supply, and then Planning and Building, it's like zoning, land use, uh, regulating.
That makes sense, and I guess, related to that, maybe my question is thinking about kind of the larger cohesion around the county and the different, uh, municipal entities that are involved. Do you have enough authority to kind of represent the whole of the city and kind of pull in all of those parts? Is that something at some point we need to talk about as a council?
Yeah, I'm struggling with what this, uh, what implementation of this looks like, because different parts of it, the going, decarbonizing our electricity, you know, like RCA is all over that, whereas, you know, HTA and HCOGS are, are really focused on the workaround transit and mode shift. So it's, we don't wanna be redundant with these existing efforts, so how do we pull all these existing efforts into this framework and implementing this plan?
Yeah, I can see that that could be challenging.
Um, I'm curious, um, you know, the adoption of this, do you think this will make, shall we decide to adopt it? And, you know, next year, uh, is it likely that this will make us more competitive for grants, um, related, you know, related to seeking funding around these implementation measures?
Yes.
Great. Uh, and then, I was curious, it's an interesting thing, I didn't realize that Eureka wouldn't have specific goals any longer by, you know, coming in as a collaborator on the plan, and, and I can understand why. Will there be some conversation through whatever entity is designated, you know, to kind of govern this? And in terms of like how this is divided amongst jurisdictions? Or do you think that'll just be sort of like the honor system?
I think that's something we need to think about, because the downside of not having specific, jurisdiction-specific numbers, is that you, you could not be as accountable as a jurisdiction. But, you know, we're dealing with this with our regional housing needs allocation, and each of the jurisdiction has their own, and we're not allowed to combine and share, and so it, it fractures us and, and doesn't allow for collaborative solutions. So I can also understand why we don't wanna divide it by jurisdiction.
For sure, I mean, I think it's better, well, I'll get into what I think later. Um, that's all my questions for now, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, and Councilmember Castellano kind of really brought it up, I was thinking about, you know, keeping, I don't say accountability, but, um, you know, if we do this as, as a group, and I, I think we need to make sure that we're all contributing, and if we're not, the, the entity, if you wanna call it the Regional Climate Committee, right, and the climate, let's call it the climate czar, they, there needs to be, I mean, I mean, you know, um, but there needs to be, um, some way that, I don't wanna say, you know, everybody's gonna be giving up a little bit of sovereignty, and we need to all be okay with that. So if we're gonna comment, if we're gonna be involved in this NOP and, or, or, you know, get involved in, in how we bring this EIR forward, Eureka can't be responsible for everything, right? Um, and not to say that we would be, our, you know, lots of entities, jurisdictions will do whatever they can, but I think that's really important part of this, like, everybody's gotta do their part, I mean, that's a global issue, right? Everybody's gotta do their part, not just one country, so I don't know how you address that, but to discuss that and, and bring that up, um, is an important part of this plan, I think, being, you know, put in place and that this Climate Committee of electeds and some brilliant person who's gonna run this thing, climate czar, um, needs to be, we need to figure that part out. I don't know how we do that, but something that I, I'd like to see us consider when we do this, does that make sense?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Thank you, was that a comment?
Yeah, I guess it was, sorry.
He asked me if it made sense, so.
Okay, any further questions? Uh, Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I, I guess I kind of had a, I, so I kind of had a similar question, is how, how does that break down, like, with us? And I feel like, I feel like Councilmember Bauer has put a lot of quotables out there now to really probably make people paranoid, but, um, I guess I'm wondering, um, like, how we would do that, or if there's a way for us to build that in. Um, I, I have that, I'm sharing that same concern, I'm thinking about that, like, from a global perspective, right? We have the same, a similar type of problem, right, with like Montreal Protocol, Protocols, and these other things that we like entered into, and it works great, it worked great up until a point, and then we have these developing, you know, countries that, you know, are no longer, uh, watching that, and it's changed dramatically, and those same things travel, and the plumes go everywhere, and so everybody's, you know, dealing with whatever anyone else is doing, so I'm, you know, on a little level then, here locally, like, well, how do we do that? And like, we're the county seat too, and so we have everybody traveling in, and we have people, you know, like, our population doubles during the day, right, which puts pressure on everything, on our infrastructure, on our police, on everything, but this is another area where, um, there is a disproportionate, I don't know if burden would be the right word? So I'm just, uh, in that people are traveling into work here, you know, traveling through here to other places, and so Eureka's got, anyway, I'm just kind of wondering, how would we, is there a way to address that? Like, how would we do that? Or is there a way for us to try to figure out how to address that? I, okay.
Yeah, I think that's always a big question when it comes to regional collaboration and a big fear, you know? Um, but I do think that, in general, the climate action climate action is going to be pro Eureka, and it's going to be good for us, because we are in Phil, we are the place to be, you know, like, we are development here is is going to be aligned and promoted by the plan. So it's, I I think it's going to be a good thing for us, regardless of if other jurisdictions don't contribute.
Anything further? Okay. Seeing no more questions, we'll open this up for public comment. Pursuant to the Brown Act, Section 54954A, the public shall be provided an opportunity to speak only on items that are listed on this special meeting agenda. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, city council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. Do we have anybody in the audience that'd come, like to speak? Welcome.
Push, I can push. Deborah Dukes. First of all, thank you so much for taking this seriously. This is something that is very dear to my heart, and I deeply appreciate this chance to hear more from you and the whole climate action plan. I have a couple of comments and questions. First of all, I was very impressed that one of the things you want to do is lead by example. I'm speaking only as myself right now, but I also sit on the Energy Committee. Excuse me. And as an example, EPD bought a bunch of big, honkin', expensive ICE SUVs about a year ago that we didn't know anything about until after it was a done deal. Leading by example, those should have been EVs, which can accelerate much faster. And once they get out of city limits, CHP or somebody else can take over. I don't think that was a very good leading by example. Secondly, we have five years until we have to meet the first deadline of 2030, assuming it's all approved by summer of next year. That is a very heavy lift. And if we don't get to 2030 on time, it's going to make making 2045 that much harder. And as Councilmember Bauer pointed out about PG&E, we have no control over them. And so we've got to do what we can do. I would like to suggest, I don't know if other people have already said this, this is not original to me, that HCOG be the lead agency on this, because it's already in existence. It has representatives from everybody, and it has a meeting place. And transportation is the largest segment of our greenhouse gas emissions. It would take a lot less time that would otherwise be spent, you know, well, let's see, who should we have represent us, and where should we meet, and how often should we meet, and who's going to be boss, and, you know, all that stuff. I would like to reiterate the question about who's going to be in charge in terms of encouraging enforcing, whatever word you'd like to use, the city's sustainability and reporting frequently and regularly to you and to the public. And finally, get a middle school teacher to get you how to work on teams.
Thank you, Deborah. Is there anyone else in the audience that would care to speak? Seeing no one in the audience, is there someone online? Colin Fisk, welcome.
Thank you. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. Good evening. I just want to adjust a couple of key points, although there's really a lot to talk about once you delve in there. And hopefully you all will get a chance to review the more detailed comments that we'll be submitting along with other environmental organizations. But we do want to support the call for HCOG to lead this work and house the Regional Climate Committee for the reasons that you just heard. But also just to emphasize that that doesn't, you know, relieve the city of of the need to provide staff and and funding and other resources. The city, along with all the other local jurisdictions, will have to contribute to help support, particularly at the beginning, you know, a staff position at HCOG to seek further funding and begin to implement the the important work of the cap. We also want to point out that the the targets in the current Climate Action Plan regarding transportation, you know, walking, biking, transit, et cetera, really fall well short of the targets that are already adopted by HCOG in the Regional Transportation Plan. And we think that those should be really brought in line with the Regional Transportation Plan. And, you know, these more ambitious targets should be what guide us as a region. There are a lot of additional measures that can be incorporated into the Climate Action Plan to ensure that we get a little further, and you can, you know, read more about that in our comments. The final issue I want to raise tonight, though, is the distinction between urban and rural areas, which in the the current draft plan, it defines any, any part of the county that is not within the city limits of Eureka or Cato or Fortuna as rural. And, you know, that would mean that if you cross the city line into Myrtle Town or Tutton or anywhere like that, you'd all of a sudden be rural instead of urban, even though, you know, you probably couldn't tell the difference on the ground. It really doesn't make sense, and it causes some misalignment of priorities, and it will reduce funding for those unincorporated areas for for transit investment and and active transportation and so forth. And so we really want to encourage aligning those definitions of urban and rural more closely with reality on the ground, and would suggest using Census Bureau's 2020 Urbanized Area Definition as an already established and authoritative definition, which makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Do you see anyone else up there, Shannon?
I see no one else on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council for final comments, keeping in mind that our next meeting starts in 12 minutes. Councilmember Castellano?
Sorry. Well, I am excited about this. I do appreciate the comments from the public, and just to keep it brief, generally agree with those comments. And especially the idea of urban areas and areas of influence or, you know, around those urban areas. I just want to point out, I may likely bring this up in future agenda items that, you know, related to zero vehicle emission. I do want to see the city of Eureka taking action on that. I also, I mean, ultimately, yes, I want every city to do its part, and also every state and, you know, every county, et cetera. But, you know, we know that we can ensure that we do our part and hopefully exceed doing our part and lead by example, which I think ultimately will make us more competitive for funding. And, you know, I think there's no reason at all why the city can't be a leader in this for the region and beyond. And hopefully use that as a challenge for other jurisdictions. You know, and again, I think, you know, we can also encourage and create opportunities for people to have to, you know, meet those as well. But, you know, I don't want that to hinder our advancement in adopting and moving this forward.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Reiterate the fact that I I agree with at least 100% of what we've heard from public comment tonight. I think it makes all all the sense that this would be housed within HCOG. The resources are there. We already have representatives who participate, and it it just makes the most sense to me. We don't have to go the socialist way of appointing a czar, although I do like it. But but I believe that was something that you had mentioned similarly in the past, just different language, more than, more than six months ago. But I I agree with the idea of having that that central focus and the fact that this is from from what it looks like to me, more of a collaborative effort. And I understand the concerns there, because Eureka does take on the the brunt, really, of people coming in during the day and then leaving towards the end of it. But this gives us the opportunity to not just make that lift by ourselves, but work with our compatriots in other cities and around the county.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I I do support HCOG being in charge of this. It just makes the most sense. A lot of knowledge there. I also think permit streamlining is a great idea. I think if you want to put solar on your roof, it should be very simple to do to get through the city, you know, anything like that. We should try and make that as easy as possible. I think we're talking about leading by example, too. I think, you know, the state pays people to bike to work, state employees. We could certainly entertain something like that. We can entertain, you know, things that get people to transition, to get that 18%, you know, biking, walking. We should figure out a way to to help our employees to lead by example, you know? And then I I really have been thinking about this, you know, we we talk about the grid. I think HCOG, our collaborative effort here should consider if we do micro grids and somehow something's getting held up, that we own them, that we build them, that we, if we are adding distribution, you know, we develop a municipal utility of some sort, whether that be, not saying take over the whole grid, but I'm saying if we have things that we have to do to meet our goals, then we should try and figure out a way to finance them and to run them so that nothing hinders us from achieving those goals, you know. So I think that's something to consider. I don't know how we would do that, but I'd like to explore that. Yeah, and I just want to say one one last thing, you know, this is probably the most important thing that this, that, well, society and especially, you know, the local communities that the biggest challenge facing us, and we have to move fast. So I hope this doesn't go beyond the the dates that we saw up there, you know, another year or another two years. We don't have that time. It should happen tomorrow. So I hope we we move with all speed to get this this action plan passed. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I want to clarify what I was saying earlier. I agree, it would, it's going to benefit benefit us no matter what, you know, what we're doing. The reason why I made the comment that I made was because we're missing targets. Some of our targets were missing as a state or because of things are happening off of our shores. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that we're part of an ecosystem that is a system. And and so when we're looking at this, even on a local level, I I would like for things to be maybe more to the point and less maybe an honor system is kind of what I'm saying. And to the point about the municipal and possible municipal utility, I love that idea. I had a conversation with one of our supervisors about something similar, probably about three weeks ago, and we were talking about how can we maybe break a hold that's on our community that's causing problems? And and so I love the idea of us exploring that as well.
Councilmember Milton?
Thank you, Mary. I'll talk fast. And thank you, staff and everybody who's been working on this. What a complex picture. And I just think it's a great example of how we have to be doing everything at once, coming at problems from out, from every angle we can think of. I also support housing this effort, the staff of this effort at HCOG. And I just wanted to sound a note, actually, I had an idea. What if when someone sells a house, we have a program similar to with ADUs or like with the Sewer Lateral, where the city is helping to finance the electrification of homes, you know, at a low interest rate, or kind of using some money to 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 help people make that change when transition's already happening, but in a way that people have to pay back. And then I just wanted to sound a note of optimism that while Eureka does get a lot of commuters, and we are, we do have a larger burden than folks in the area to our larger responsibility, I should say that there's also a lot more opportunity here for pedestrians, for bicycling, like, people are going to be way more likely and able to bicycle around Eureka or to walk around Eureka than they would be to go, say, from Eureka to Fortuna. So there's some not necessarily low-hanging fruit, but there's a lot of potential for efficiencies there.
Thank you. If there's another, nothing further, thank you all for participating in this very meaningful and important discussion. We're adjourned until 6:00 PM. We will begin our regular city council meeting.